And so tonight, we will be reviewing the Capitol Project in this setting. So you know, Andrew is here to present and answer questions with me. We also have our architect, Bill Wispower, on Zoom. So somewhere on that screen, because we don't have the little setup over there, but he'll be able to answer questions or share. And so we are going to go through a similar presentation that we've done at the time. Hall's there, it is. So, is this... All right. Okay. So we're going to start by talking about the process. The process is something that we really wanted to improve this go-around and get a lot of stakeholder involvement and participation. So I'm just going to walk through. There's a lot of things that fit into the development of this plan. So the first thing, and this is a very important input, is, well, actually, it's not on the slide, but we hired a new architecture firm, Tetra Tech. And Bill Wispower is the architect who's working with us from that firm. And so he and colleagues from his firm, Architects and Engineers, did a building condition survey in December of 2020. That is required by the state for five years. And they did a building condition survey. They look at every aspect of the building. They catalog it and document it and kind of rank what needs to be addressed. And we have that actually on the Capitol Project website for people to see. It's been up there since last spring. And so that was really probably one of the most important parts of getting this going. We have a facilities committee of the board that meets every month to discuss these issues as well. One of the changes we did this year is we created, we knew this project was going to be bigger. At the time, we weren't exactly sure how big we could do. That would be last year. But we created a stakeholder committee at each door building. So serving on these committees is me, Andrew Corrodi, Bill Wispower, and also building principal, parents, teachers, and other staff. And so they met a few times last spring in which we really just kind of, we shared the building condition survey information with them, but we really tried to get them thinking about ways they wanted to improve their school. We did take minutes from the very first meeting, because that was more of a brainstorming meeting. And we just got a lot, we got a lot of really great and varied ideas from all the stakeholders. So that was a really great process. So during that, during those meetings, we started to then focus it in. Bill was a great help with that. And he really started to develop priorities for each building. Two main things we really wanted to address in this project are obviously the building condition survey results. We wanted to really address infrastructure needs across the district. It's our number one responsibility and priority. We have safe buildings, buildings that are functional. So we wanted to address that. But then, we wanted to also inspire. And we wanted to inspire our students. We wanted to inspire our staff. We wanted to create learning environments or transform, change learning environments at each door building. To put it a different way, we really wanted, we wanted our students, we wanted our staff to really see the results of this project on a daily basis. And so each of the buildings came up with different ideas to address that. We'll get into that when we go through each building. So then, over the summer, Bill was the one, over the summer, who was doing the most work with all this, kind of taking all those ideas from the committees and putting together a plan. Our work was really more on the financial side, trying to gauge how much we could afford. We really wanted to keep it tax neutral. And then we started re-engaging with the board in August and Board Facilities Committee just with a sense of what could we accomplish financially? How do we keep this tax neutral? What's the timeline for this project? And you know what highlights and things we want to achieve at each building? So in early September, we all agreed to go forward with this October 26 vote. It's exciting that it's less than a week away. And so then, this last part of the process has been about community engagement and communications. You know, things have changed a lot with community engagement. It feels like we're sort of in the in-between phase. But we've done two Zoom town halls and we've recorded both. One was sort of, I call it the longer version, which is close to an hour. And the other one was a little bit shorter, a little over half an hour. And we answered questions that came up in those. We also attended almost every PTO meeting. We were able to do four of the six schools. We couldn't do four ourselves because we had a board meeting on that night, October 12. And South Avenue, we haven't been able to schedule yet. But we were able to attend the other four schools and really talk specifically about the schools. One of those meetings was in person, the other was Zoom. So that was a really good part of the process, because we really got to focus in on each specific building. And then lastly, we did do the mailer that went out to every resident that kind of has the highlights of the plan on it. We also have engaged with, you know, media, local media as well. Like current, gives a journal, et cetera. So this is, we wanted to have a more traditional board meeting to give people a chance to kind of, you know, be in person and public about the project as well. So then, moving forward, the vote is on October 26. If we have a majority of voters, so yes, and support this project, then we really start, this was a kind of a key point that I spoke about at all the PTO meetings. That's when we actually really start the design process. We're really more in the ideas part of this right now. We start the design process and Bill and his team just really start working really quickly and start moving on some of the things that are, that we want to try to address this summer, summer of 2022. That would be like the roofs. That's some of the buildings and some of the things that involve less design and are easier to get approved from the State Education Department. And then the summer of 2023 would be when we address most of the rest of the project. So there's, State Education needs to review and improve all of this, and then things go out to bid. So this is just really the beginning part of Multi-year Project. And we're really excited to talk about, let's see. Okay. So we're going to go through each school and just talk. And so this can be pretty informal if you have questions, just put them out there. So we're starting with Glennon. One of the things that, I'm not going to go completely in this order. One of the things that we've been talking about at Glennon really since my time here is creating a more secure front entrance. It's the one school that we have that really just has the one set of doors inside the building. So we want to create a new entrance to the building. Another thing that we've been hearing a lot about, really in previous years, but a lot this year, is creating more parking spaces at Glennon and also doing some redesign of the traffic flow, both the drop-off and pickup areas. This year, we've been experiencing more issues with that. There's more people driving this year. And Glennon also has two pre-K programs, which has more, I think, pre-K parents more up to drive as well. And so it's just created a bit more of a traffic problem. So we can't wait to address that as well. Then, just moving through the list, you know, one of the things we really heard from, from the teachers on the committee was we've done some of those coves and some of the classrooms at Glennon. We want to continue with that through most of the rest of the classrooms. One of the big things at Glennon, we're doing tests on it right now to gauge the extent of what we need to do. We've budgeted for the greatest amount of what it would cost, but there's an aging septic system behind the school that we need to do quite a bit of work on. So we're in the process right now of figuring out exactly how much work. How we budget for this is we obviously plan for the worst-case scenario with that. And then if we don't have to do all of that, we can do some reallocation of funds at some point. ADA upgrades to bathrooms, install energy-efficient lighting in the hallways. That's something that you're going to see in many of our schools. You know, I think it's something that doesn't get as much attention, but brightening up hallways and brightening up common spaces in all of our schools is really important. Kids spend, obviously, most of their time in the classroom. They spend a lot of time in the hallway as well, moving around the building and really having bright, well-lit hallways is really important. Replacing emergency lighting, replacing boilers with energy-efficient units, replacing classroom unit ventilators that are quite old, as you can see on the slide. One thing I've said in all my presentations, I'll say again tonight, is despite the age of these unit ventilators, we do have the highest available filtration in them. And we also have portable, have the filters in all the rooms as well. That was part of our COVID plan, as many of you know. So also upgrading ventilation in the library. And I already talked about the entrance. So Glennon, the price tag for the Glennon part of this project is a little bit under $5 million. So one of the questions that we had, one of our forums, was a question around equity amongst the elementary schools. Like, why is one elementary school having, you know, more resources allocated to them than others? And so I responded to that question in a couple of ways, and I'll take a minute to address it here. One is, this project is really driven by the need of the buildings. And so one very pricey part of this Glennon work is that septic field, or, you know, fixing and replacing the septic. A front entrance to a building is also another expensive proposition. We didn't see to have any, you know, alternative with those other than to do it. Those are both things that I think needed to be done for a while now. So the one thing that we did try to have some equity on is the fact that we really wanted each of the schools, including our secondary schools, to have spaces transformed, you know, noticeable by students and staff, things that make a difference in their daily lives in the building. And so we think we do achieve that with all our schools. And then construction, and I won't repeat this for every slide, but it's phased over summers and fall in 2022 and 2023. We do, we do do work during the school year. So we do work that we can do at night when students are in the building or on the weekends. So that could be some of the unit ventilator work or electrical work. We do, we do have contractors work in the building when students aren't there, if it won't disrupt the outcomes here, learning of the students. All right. This one, way down here. Okay. So these are just some pictures. We're going to be doing some redesigning of that bus loop and drop-off area. And this is a picture you see a lot, one of our aging boilers at Glennon that we will replace in this project. Yeah?
So if there was like a septic system, does Tetra Tech sort of handle all of those kinds of things with the way, the way you're going to come up with optimizations or concepts? How do the different pieces work? Do they manage everything suit to us?
I mean, they oversee the whole project, but, you know, we'll have a general contractor for this and then lots of subcontractors. And so some of the actual work will be done by the general contractor, the subcontractor. But Tetra Tech will oversee the work along, what's that?
They would be in charge of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, along with us.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Moving on to Forest Hill. So Forest Hill, I think there's a couple of highlights, and then I'll go through the list. One of the things, you know, with the word equity, so one of the equity things that came up across the committees when we met was playground equity across the elementary schools. So when we talk about Forest Hill, and then a little bit later when we talk about South Avenue, we're really trying to achieve a better sense of playground equity for those, for all four of our elementary schools. So Forest Hill, Forest Hill's play area definitely needs upgrades. And so right now, our idea is that have the upper, what they call the upper playground for the younger students, and then the lower playground for the older students. The plan right now is to create some sort of, you know, so the upper's on a hill, the lower's on the top of the hill, is to create some sort of interconnecting play area that goes down the hill. And so obviously, we haven't designed that yet, but I think it's a cool idea. And so what I'd love to see with both of the schools doing the playground work is to even go beyond these committees that we have and really seek out input for students at the school too. I've shared this story in various committee meetings over the last few months, but I think one of the most fun experiences I had as an elementary principal, back when I did that, was getting to redesign two playgrounds at one of my schools. It was really, really fun. And we really involved a lot of the students in the process. So doing a lot of work on the Forest Hill playground to really make that more usable, not only for the school, but the community as well. And then another big part of the project is one of the lower hallways where the third and fourth grade and the art room are. It's a really dark hallway. It used to have windows at some point in the life of the building that were covered up. So we want to replace the ceiling in that hallway and put windows back in and really try to brighten up that hallway, because it can be pretty dark, especially in the winter months. So those are two big parts of the project, along with some other things. We're going to be replacing hallway ceilings throughout the, throughout the school, energy-efficient lighting in hallways as well. I talked about that lower floor hallway, putting windows in. ADA compliance with an exterior ramp. Replace this in the concrete box at the drop-off. Updated emergency lighting. Again, our four elementary schools were doing boiler replacements, so replacing boilers with energy-efficient units. So Forest Hill is a school that has aging unit ventilators as well, so we want to replace those to help further improve their quality. Ventilation, improving ventilation to the nurse's area, play structure, which is really exciting. And then doing some paving in the drop-off loop. So the cost for the Forest Hill part of the project is $2.7 million. And then... So that's the hallway on the left there that we're going to add some windows to, replace that ceiling. That's the other side of that hallway from the outside. And you can see where there used to be windows, I guess, and where we probably will be putting them back. There's another one of our older boilers that we are happy to replace. And then a unit ventilator, if I'm looking at that correctly, that will be replaced as well. Oops, Sergeant. So now moving on to Sergeant. So Sergeant, the highlight of the Sergeant project is to move the library media space to what I think would be really kind of like the heart of the building. So we're going to move it up to the main floor and have it be right kind of when you walk in. And there's that short hallway, the short entry hallway. And the library will be right on the other end of that hallway facing, you know, facing out to the mountains. And so I was teased, our architect, I think architects love designing libraries. So he's already got some ideas going for that, you know, we'll work with the committee. But, you know, having a new library where the elementary schools is really exciting. And there's a lot of cool things that we hope to do with that. But again, the committee's going to help drive that. So that's a really big highlight for the Sergeant project, along with, you know, again, you're seeing some themes here, replacing our hallway ceilings, energy-efficient lighting in the hallways, repairing the west access drive and loop, exterior, replacing exterior ramp with ADA compliance, replacing concrete walks on the northwest entrance, outdated, replacing outdated emergency lighting, boilers again, replacing them with energy-efficient units, upgrading ventilation in nurses' area. So the project cost for Sergeant is $2.6 million. And then there's another boiler picture. There's some repaving that's going to happen in that middle picture, and that's the current library. We're going to move up to the main floor. I think Bill has some ideas right now of really making use of the windows and mountain view and creating some nice spaces for the students that Sergeant's using. All right. Our last elementary school we're going to talk about today, South Avenue. So, you know, a few slides ago, I talked about playground equity across, across the elementary schools, South Avenue. This really needs to be addressed. So this, we really hit on this very early in the committee process with them. And so we really want to, I'm going to use the word reimagine the outdoor spaces at South Avenue. We know that the community has put some love and attention into the spaces. So we want to do our best to work with some of the things that are already there, but we really want to also reimagine, reinvent the space. So we want to create an outdoor learning area in front of the school and also just really redo that playground. If you're familiar with it, they have trouble growing grass in the grassy part, or part of the grassy part. You know, the play equipment is used by the entire school. And so we really want to add to the play equipment, make it really usable. Also redo the hard surface part of the play area. So this is really exciting part of the project. I think it would be really exciting for the school. And again, I think getting, you know, involvement from beyond the committee and the students could be really powerful. And so...
Matt Perry?
Yeah.
With that, are you taking into consideration the relationship between the back playground and the neighborhood? There's been, it's come up a few times with the city, that they're interested in taking that fence down, and it would be a great opportunity.
The one thing we're reviewing is the back part of the playground. You know, it's not the steepest hill in the world, but it is a little bit of a hill that goes into a street. So we want to do something that kind of blocks the flow of a ball rolling down the hill and kids chasing after it into the street. I know it's not, you know, it's not the busiest street in the world, but there are cars on it. And so we want to do something there, but we'd love to open access that to the community too. But that's something Bill, Bill's heard that in numerous committee meetings. He's been thinking a lot about that too. Craig, do you have a question?
Yeah. On the, Matt Perry, is that to be paved as is, or is there some redesign involved?
Pretty sure what that one is to be paved as is. I'm not, I'm not sure with the space, how much redesign we could even do. South Avenue has such a diff, you know, so many walkers are at South Avenue. Yeah, it's just a repaving. Yeah.
Yes.
Just checking. So just, you know, again, you know, like our other schools, energy-efficient lighting in the hallways, an exterior, replacing exterior ramp to make it ADA compliant, emergency out, emergency lighting being replaced. Again, boilers. I hope we get one more picture of a boiler on the next slide. The boiler, the old boiler picture is dropping out. I've done this presentation a few times now. They look old, definitely. So upgrading ventilation. We did a lot of ventilation work in South Avenue in the last Capitol Project. We have a little bit more to do. But I think this outdoor learning, both from the front and then really redesigning the back play area is really exciting. This, all the committees were really fun to work with. I can't wait to kind of do the next phase. So if the voters approve this next week, we aim to get the committees back together, probably in January, to really start talking about design. And I'm really excited about, you know, doing more with the outdoors. Like, South Avenue doesn't have a ton of space, but we really want to make use of the space they have. And, you know, one thing that we've really seen over the last year and a half is teachers are really willing to go outside and work with kids outside. And so we want to capture that and, you know, improve our outside spaces when we can. So the price for the work, the estimated price of the work in South Avenue is $1.5 million. And there's a overhead shop of the back current, back area of stuff. And then just like having a turf play space and expanding the play structure with more equipment, which, you know, the children in my, or the child in my life that I speak with the most, he's not South Avenue student, but he always talks about more equipment. So I know that would be exciting for the kids. And then also expanding the hard surface play area. And then there are hallway, just where we're going to be, you know, doing that hallway work. It'd be lighting and ceiling, repaving, where repaving needs to happen. And there's our last old boiler. All right. Moving on from a middle school, so I haven't talked a lot about the previous Capitol Project. So it was a much smaller project than this one. It was nine? It was about $9 million. This one is $26 million. But Rambo got a lot of attention in the last Capitol Project with upgraded ventilation. We redid the family careers room. We redid a science lab. We redid one of the special education classrooms. And, but Rambo, you know, continues to be a lot of work. It's an older building. And so we're putting a lot of attention to it in this project. So I'm just going to, there's a lot of exciting things with Rambo. I am just going to go through the list here and talk about each one a little bit. So we're doing some roof replacement at Rambo. We did some roof replacement with the last project as well. Replacing corridor ceilings, Rambo, you know, some of Rambo's hallways really need to be brightened up. And so some of this work with the corridor ceilings and also energy-efficient lighting is going to be addressed that. Repaving the parent bus drop-off loop, replacing the exterior ramps with ADA compliant sign. Rambo really needs a lot of electrical work. And so, so you see some of that on the next part of the slide. And also replacing the emergency lighting. Even though we did a lot of ventilation work in Rambo in the last project, we're going to continue to upgrade the ventilation in the building. And then the instructional part is, is really exciting. We're going to be renovating, just fully renovating, two more science labs. There are the, there's a red rectangle there at the bottom of that picture. And then completely renovating two art rooms, the two art rooms, which are the other red rectangle on the right side of that picture. And with both of those redesigns, creating outdoor spaces, outdoor learning spaces for both the science labs, the art labs, the outdoor learning space would go into that corner. Again, you know, teachers at middle school may use the outdoors, and then most of the kids love being outdoors. And so really exciting to be able to do this at Rambo. I, you know, I keep finding the art rooms, really, they're, they're going to be modern art studios. And the science labs will really get some needed attention as well.
So Matt?
Yeah.
So how are the conditions of the boilers at Rambo?
Didn't? We did in the last Capitol Projects.
Thanks.
But we could, you know what, just maybe we'll send a picture of those. I'll start tweeting, I'll start tweeting on boiler pictures and just create a, they're probably, you know, a lot shinier and not quite as, not quite as cool looking. Craig?
The drop-off loop, which is in front of the T I, I spoke to the parent drop-off loop.
Yes, yes.
There's a chronic problem of somebody or other driving off the edge of the pavement and putting massive ruts in the yard and the lawn. And I hope that you can adjust that when the engineers take a look at that in some fashion. They need to be wider, better marked for traps, curbs.
Go ahead.
It'd be nice to reduce the mud.
Okay. So Bill, our architect is listening in. Bill, I hope you're taking notes for that. But that, I mean, you know, what Bill really emphasized, and then when I met with the PTOs, I really emphasized as well, this is just the beginning of this. So when we really get into the design part, we'll get way more detailed on these things too. This is more of the big picture part of it. Total project cost for Rambo is a little bit under $8.5 million. So Rambo is getting a lot of needed attention in this project. Again, same timeline as the other schools. So that's a closer look at where the science rooms are. We're going to be doing that lab redesign. These, you know, science teachers do a lot with lab-based learning. And so we really want to, you know, create spaces that emphasize that. And the rooms will have a way to open out into an outdoor learning space as well. Art rooms are there. So that's just kind of one... So that's just kind of one picture of what a more modern art studio looks like in a school. You know, I, I've seen this in other buildings where even furniture is more movable and things are really bright. And then the outdoor learning space out into the courtyard is just a sense of what it might look like. Uh, the courtyard over the last couple of years has been getting a lot more attention and, you know, kids are going out there more. Clubs are out there, it's really cool to see. So this will expand even further the use of the courtyard, which is great to me. I've, I've seen a lot of buildings in my career, sometimes courtyards have a way of sometimes almost getting, you know, people lose interest in using the courtyard and we're gaining interest in it with this project. So I think that's great. And then, so that is one of the hallways. That's actually the hallway, looking down on the right part of that hallway is where the science labs are that we'll be redoing. That's one of the kind of darker hallways that we're really gonna try to spruce up with the new ceiling and new lighting. Uh, that's where the repaving is gonna happen. That is the parent drop off loop. And then that is a picture on the right of one of the current art room. And our teachers are just thrilled to be able to redesign that and just get a lot of new energy to their rooms. All right, so last but not least, Beacon High School. So even though Beacon High School is our newest building, it's built a little bit over 20 years ago. It does require some work. And so we do have some roof replacement. We had roof work in the last project, upgrading the exterior ramp for ADA compliance, outdoor emergency lighting. You've seen that in all our schools. Uh, we will be replacing the finish of the pool. Uh, the pool always seems like it gets a little love in the Capitol projects. Pools always need some work to keep them up to date. Replacing the hot water storage tank, some work in the kitchen. Uh, upgrades to the fitness center. So this is not, you know, a major architectural redesign of the fitness center, but it will get some, it will get some attention in this with some new equipment and some possibly like a outdoor entry, you know, to the, to the outside. But it's not gonna get like a major full renovation like some of the classrooms are. Uh, we really wanna redo the TV studios, the TV studio. Much of it is the original, you know, TV studio that came with the high school 20 years ago. Uh, so we wanna provide the latest technology in there and redesign it to be a modern space. And I've seen, the last six thousand, the high school really made use of its TV studio. Like a lot of collaborative classes, kids were in and out of it all day long, putting different kinds of shows together. And our program has suffered a bit due to the aging technology. So we are delighted to be able to really redo that space. And we can't wait to work on the curriculum side of that and, you know, get more classes using it and more students in there. The other thing that came up from the committees, I hope you're seeing a theme, that a lot of this came from input from all the folks that we spoke with in the putting together of this. But the, the, the current science lab configuration of the high school is not really meeting the needs of the science department. Both with the depth and breadth of the classes they offer and just scheduling has become really difficult. Uh, so we have space in this project to do with the existing space in the high school, two additional science rooms. Uh, one space is clearly marked for that additional science room and we're still kind of working through the other one would go. Uh, but the science department's been working with us on this and they, they really struggle to schedule their classes in the current configuration. So even though there's not more students at the high school, just with all the course offerings that we do and all the demands placed on the department, they need more space. So the project cost for Beacon High School is just a little bit under four million for the project. And again, the same timeline. So you see a picture of the current TV studio. You see a picture of the pool finish. And, oh, okay, moving on, forgot that there wasn't more pictures of the high school work. So bus, uh, transportation apartment, uh, bus facility, we're doing one thing there and that's replacing the bus wash system for 683,000 dollars. And then at the track, uh, we are gonna be replacing the track surface, replacing all the field event surfaces, replacing where the disc is and the shop quit that then happens. Uh, we're gonna rehabilitate the natural turf field. Want to be clear, that's not putting a, an artificial turf that is just, you know, trying to get the grass growing a little bit better. So one thing I wanna say about the work we're doing on the track is an interesting thing that came out of our committees. I wanna say, this was probably mentioned in like three of our committees. People asked about, can we do something with the track? Can we keep upgrading it? So during the course of, I mean, all of my time here in Beacon, but especially the last couple of years with the pandemic, uh, the track is truly a space that we use as, as a school district, but also the community uses really to a really great extent. And so we wanted to make sure that the track is redone and, you know, we can really make it a great, or continue to keep it as a great space for our students and also the community. Uh, another thing about the track is, you know, the, the track team is probably our largest, you know, has the largest number of participants. And, and so we really wanted to invest in it for, you know, lots of different reasons. So we're excited to do that. And I think we have some pictures. So that, these are some parts, uh, you know, some pictures kind of showing why we need to, you know, replace what currently is with the new track. All right, finance.
So we mentioned that the total project is 26 million dollars. And how are we gonna pay for that? So we are gonna use 600,000 dollars of funds from fund balance. Mainly when we close on the property at Dutch Stadium that we were gonna sell. And, and the public did vote on that sale in May, has not closed yet. So we're gonna use 600,000 dollars of the proceeds of that sale. We were also able to fund the remaining amount in the capital reserve of a million dollars from unappropriated fund balance. Things that were left from the budget in, in the last two years. So we're using that as well. So the total amount that we would bond would be 24,400,000. A really important part, our building aid is 67.2% of the cost, which means that the state aid pays about two thirds of the total project, which is wonderful for us. It's, it's made Beacon be able to do Capitol projects in the past and actually do this one as well to get some major things accomplished. We are timing it now during this time because we will see a decrease in district debt. And one of the plans has been over the last 10, 15 years is that when we do a Capitol project, we'll time it in a point where we are gonna have a decrease in debt so that we would not have a tax increase because of the Capitol project. And that was really important. That was something that the board really asked us to look at to try to see what we could accomplish without raising taxes. Um, in this climate, we didn't find it fair to the community. So we're really happy that we're able to do a 26 million dollar project, getting, you know, two thirds of it reimbursed by building aid and not raising the taxes for this project.
I have the last one. So does anyone have any questions from Matt or I?
Let's, let's ask Bill a question. Anyone have a question for Bill and see if we can get him on soon. Anthony, you have that question?
Anthony, do. So I'd like to know how much Bill likes libraries, cause I like libraries too.
Let's see if he can get that.
I like libraries very much. They are one of the most fun ones to do. Burien is one of the only thing in the library I hope is librarian is that one. Most times by the time we start a project with librarian, it enters the tires. Not that one. I hope that, I hope this one will bring.
There's, there's Bill. Do, do we wanna open up two questions in merit to the public?
Yeah, is there any questions from the public? There, I don't see anyone in the audience. If there's anyone on Zoom that has a question.
Somebody asked?
I have a couple of questions. And primarily about the project, just this whole thing about finance and why they keep billing the, why they keep counting this as zero percent tax impact when, when a significant percentage of this is being financed by a bond issue.
So in our regular budget that we put to the voters every year, we have principal and interest payments in the capital portion. So the, the reason we're doing it at this time and trying to time it is that some of the principal and interest payments that are currently in the budget will come off, will not be included going forward. So we timed it so that new principal and interest payments that will come through into the budget will not have an increase in the impact of the budget. So what, what we're saying is that we will not increase the budget and increase taxes for a new Capitol project. We basically wait until an older project is paid off, the principal and interest payments are not included in the general fund budget. And then we add the new principal and interest payments for the new project and it's a wash, it's a zero impact. Does that answer your question?
No, but as long as this, this, this has to be paid back, it's not a zero impact. Somebody's gotta pay it back.
Yes, but you are paying, you are currently paying back. So what we said was we would not increase it for this project. So you have been paying Capitol projects. Um, that's how we've been basically doing some work in the buildings. And one or two of them are coming off, they're getting paid in full within the next year or two. So we are asking the public to, to vote on this. And by the time we actually do bonding for this project, those other projects will be paid off in full. So it's just a substitution of the principal and interest payment rather than increasing them.
Also, I, I, I was looking for, um, in the budget, in the, in the, in the breakdown of the project cost, I was trying to find a listing for the consulting fee. I couldn't find it anywhere.
The, the arch, so we have an architect and a construction manager, which is as, that we call, they're called soft costs. Basically there are consulting fees, there's some other fees in there as well. I don't know if we've actually broken all that out specifically. We, it's more in a general nature.
But that's included in the, in your estimate for the cost of it?
Right, it's not in addition to, that's all included in the 26 million dollars. That's, yeah, that's correct.
I was also trying to figure out, um, I was also trying to look for, through the meeting minutes, to figure out the selection project, which is selection process for, for the architect, the engineers and the construction management.
So the, the architect, we did a request for proposal, also called an RFP, where we actually received proposals and the facilities committee of the board and superintendent and I and the director of facilities at the time, who's not with the district anymore, interviewed those people. Um, and we came across Tetra Tech. So there were numerous people that had submitted proposals and we did an extensive interview process. Same with the construction manager. Um, the construction manager, this would be his second project with the district. Tetra Tech, this would be their first project with the district.
And I know that, I noticed that we have, we have, we have everything broken down by priority. So, I mean, who's, how, how are we gonna make sure that? So we overshot a number of things and, and so we have more scope than we have money. Well, how are we making sure that we stay within budget?
Okay, so, so I think there's a little bit of a confusion. So if you look at the slides that are on the website, that's all based on the building condition survey. So when we ask the architect and the engineer, they're gonna tell us everything that we should be addressing in the school district. So we have aging buildings and then, so we have this huge list of things prior to deciding what's in a Capitol project. Then it's prioritized. So we asked our experts to help us. What really needs to get done within the next five years? What really needs to get done in the next 10 years? And we build a priority list. And then we use that list along with some increase, some enhancements of educational space. And we stay within the 26 million dollars. So I, I think, I, I think you're looking at the priority list and we know that those, not everything on that list can actually be done. We've prioritized what absolutely needs to get done, but we've also included some enhancements for educational space. And all of that fits within the 26 million dollar project. Did you have another question?
Yeah, I, you know, going through this and I was, I've been looking at, at budget increases for Beacon schools. I've, I've lived in the town for 15 years. And for 15 years, the budget cost for, for the, for the schools. Just between, and just between 2015 and 2020, budget, the school budget has increased 11%. It's far outpace the inflation. And on this, this list of, of things that you guys, that, you know, have, you have it as part of this, this, this Capitol improvement project, quite a few of them are operational items. And I, it puzzles me that we, we, you know, the school budget has increased every year significantly. And we have items on this list, like paving, that, that really absolutely should be under operational cost.
So, um, I'd like to explain that just a little bit. So having a Capitol project, we, there's two different types of aid that we get. We get regular state aid that actually helps us fund our general fund budget every night. We also get building aid. I think we mentioned that at the last slide. So building aid for Beacon is a, is a higher percentage than most, at 67%. If we were to put paving in the general fund budget, we have a tax cap that we cannot go over. So if we need to put these major items in the general fund budget, there will be things that we cannot include, that things that would have to come out, you know, things that might affect students and education. So the, the most cost beneficial way to do major things capital wise would be to do them in a Capitol project. Because we get more state, uh, building aid back, it's more cost beneficial than putting major work into the general fund. If that makes sense.
There's also, just to up the budget, if you just look at, if you're looking at 15 years at a, at a total budget and then looking 15 years later and subtracting the budget from, you know, from the current, for the past budget from the current budget, that's not 11%. It's about, we stay within the tax cap, which is often 2% or less.
Or less.
Additionally, we, that, we've had, almost 50% of our budget comes from state aid. So that's not on the taxpayers, local taxpayers. Uh, it is decreasing incrementally. However, because of population increases, um, the budget's been amortized over a larger population. And so in some ways, people are paying less in taxes than they have annually. So it's, it's not necessarily, and the differential of that total budget increasing over time, that could be something, you know, a big piece of that is just the regular rate of increase for teacher salaries, pension and benefit funds. I mean, that's the majority of our budget is these, um, these increases that are sealed in legally for us.
We always mention when we, when we talk about, um, we do our general fund budget overview, that we are a people business. And so most of our budget, a huge percentage of our budget is salary and benefits. So that's, operational piece of it is a very small piece of the, the total budget.
Yeah, but ultimately we have, no matter, no matter how you parse these numbers, ultimately to take care of these, these items, we have to issue a bond.
Yes. If, for the Capitol project, yeah. Yes, for the capital project, yes.
That, 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 that these people, the same people, that someone at that table is trying to tell me I'm paying less taxes, I have to pay back.
I, I think, we didn't say you would pay less taxes for the capital project. What we said was that it's.
I know what you said. I know exactly what you said.
Okay.
You don't have to explain anything. I heard what you said.
Okay.
But thank you for responding to my question.
Sure, anytime.
Thank you. I think there was one more question? Does anyone else have a question? Or comment on Zoom? Okay, are there any other questions from board members? I mean, at this point, no. We've heard this quite a few times.
I mean, just to kind of reiterate or say it a little bit differently, New York State has close to 700 school districts. Every single one of those 700 school districts does a capital project like this from time to time. Some of these districts propose a capital project that actually, beyond the year-to-year increases, increase taxes more than that. The board really pushed us as a staff and with our financial advisors to make sure that this project was tax neutral. To do it through a bond is the financially responsible way to do it. For the reasons Henry said, we actually get state aid back on that. We have to keep our buildings safe. We have to keep modernizing our learning spaces. So this is, there's nothing unusual about what we're doing. It's what every district, every few years in the state of New York does to keep its facilities, you know, the classrooms modern, but also the building safe and working. But, you know, that's, that's the, what's great about the different ways we're meeting. We're getting a lot of different questions and feedback. And so I appreciate the people who watch tonight and have questions. And thanks, Henry, for putting together the financial aspect of this project too. Craig?
I believe also, if I'm not mistaken, that there are limits imposed by state education on your operating budget. And what kind of building projects you can do out of your operating budget. Is that kind of tapped at a certain level of niches? And you really can't put, you can't put a big truck in a small garage enough to do this?
Right, right. I mean, just the way building aid works, if we do it through a capital project, for every hundred dollars we spend, we get $67 back, right? If we did it out of just our regular operating budget, for every hundred dollars we spend, how much would we get back from the state? Right, it'd be a lot less. In the 40s? In the low 40s. So it's, this is the, you know, the financially responsible way to go because we're, we're getting a much higher building aid from the state, which then comes back into our revenue and helps us meet all the financial needs of everything else that we do. The state created a system that really tries to support communities in keeping their buildings up to date and keeping their buildings safe and functional. It's, you know, there's a lot of ways we can critique New York, but the state does gear several things to help districts keep, you know, every few years improving the facilities. The district and the building aid formula is a major way they accomplish that.
Well, and fixing some of these things before they break is, it's better, it's more sound financially, but it's also thinking about the student's experience. You don't want to be dealing with a broken boiler in the middle of a school year or something that will disrupt their education. So this sort of planning, I think, is really important.
And I do understand where our taller, for lack of a better term, coming from, if you just kind of start looking through, it is hard to make sense. It's a complex process. Like, looking at that building and condition survey, you would think that this is all, that all the things that we're trying to do with less money, that's not the case. Like we said, we go through that and have that information just so that we're aware of the state of our buildings and we prioritize what we can finance to fix, what makes the most sense to finance to fix. That this, you know, $26 million doesn't, it doesn't make logical sense that you'd be paying for something and it doesn't cost anything. But we are, instead of taking something out, we are just keeping it going by putting this new project as the other one finishes. So the difference is it's tax neutral because it won't be felt as an increase, but it's still, we will still be paying money for it.
So I think there was. Laurie, did you want to speak or are you just putting your question?
I think there's.
Her input, her microphone's not quite.
Oh, I got it.
So I'll just, I'll just do the. A person that, yeah, a person in the chat, their microphone isn't working. What they say is, I sat on the sergeant committed, I sat on the sergeant committed for this project about the last project very closely. As a parent who watched the last project process closely, I must say it sounded wrong in the project. I have concerns about the following. How is our construction manager, who is the same manager? He was the last time going through the process this time. Same on schedule, doing need work, et cetera. I'm sorry, I'm having mic problems. So a couple of things about the last project. We did make some changes after the last project. We are not working with the same architect that we worked on the last time. That's why we went through the whole process Henry talked about. We also, I guess without getting into great detail here, we did have some issues with a general contractor as well. And we documented our issues there, so we don't have to work with that, with that contractor again as well. Sorry, I'm just trying to keep up. So working with the New Architecture Firm and this being a bigger project will have a different management structure of this. I will be involved in the project on a weekly basis, maybe with both construction management and the architect, Bill. Wisbauer with any relevant staff, relevant staff would be Andrew Corroni at this point when we hire a new facilities director. I'll also be involved in at least a portion of the weekly meetings we have with all the contractors and subcontractors. Some of that stuff gets kind of nitty-gritty detail that they don't need to be a part of, but I'll be involved in that part as well. And then where the board will come in, where they didn't have maybe quite as role as the last time, is they'll be involved in a quarterly meeting with the architect and construction manager. It won't be the entire board, it would be the facilities committee of the board. Probably, probably in a part of the regular facilities meeting, like so that night would be an extended meeting in terms of time. I know they'll be briefs and can ask any question that they have and get answers from both architect and construction manager. I do feel that some of our problems that are needed from the, from the areas that we replace or will replace moving forward. And we feel like we will have a better plan for managing that than this one. Sorry. And some outside issues. Who is the person who will advocate? I'm just reading this chat again. Who's the person who'll advocate for sergeant? Who will be the district leader? Who will be the go-to person for progress reports? There was a feeling that there was no sergeant advocating for our building last time. I wanted to feel confident that there will be leadership paying attention to the day-to-day goings-on of the construction in our building. Day-to-day outreach to parents about the project at any of our buildings is going to be the building principal. They are much more involved in this project than they were the last time, being in the committees and also being part of meetings with us as a team. If any building principal can communicate what's going on with the projects in the community, that will come from me then. In terms of advocating for any building, I see myself as advocate for all the buildings, but if people, at any point, and I think the committee structure is a good place to advocate for any individual building. We created the committee structure back in the spring. We'll keep that going through the duration of the project as well. Now probably meeting at all times on a monthly basis. During the design phase, we'll be regularly and then we'll have some sort of meeting schedule to keep up with the ongoing project.
Do you think we did that?
Yeah, I can, there is last, one last question there. Several simpler visible projects that can be done by DCSD staff, painting sergeants outside entrances is the most visible part of our building for parents, the last capital project. Seem to be the reason why the simpler project couldn't be completed. We are working on simpler projects throughout the district and will work with each school to try to get some of those simpler ones done. And to the person who's asking the questions before, when we mean simpler, we mean something that is not like a large budget initiative that would come out of our regular school budget, but stuff that's smaller in scale. Will this project, I'm just reading the last question here. Will these projects or to delay these projects that staff could execute? No, I don't think they should. No, it's, it's, my eyesight is actually working. I didn't have to do the glass adjustment thing as much as I have to when I'm on Zoom. Just through the record, I did have my eyes checked just like six months ago. They said I did not need your glasses. And then ever since I had that appointment, all I do is adjust my glasses to see anything. But I, you know, I think I also want to say about the last project, and I do think we accomplished a lot of positives with the last project. You know, being, homecoming week being last week, I was at all the events that were behind the high school. And then unfortunately, because of the rain on Saturday, we had to delay the dance, the homecoming dance that we're doing outside. It's this Saturday, so I'll be there for that. But just seeing, you know, the lights, the field, whether people were paying attention to the game or not, the game was great or the games were great, but it was also just, it's become like a gathering space for people of all ages. There's, you know, multi-generations of Beacon at the events. There's young kids. It's, it's been really great to see. That was a big part of the last project. Another big part of the last project was the unit ventilators in some of our elementary schools and around that, which is greatly improved ventilation in those buildings at the time. We didn't see it coming, but it is time it became very important. The new classrooms at around that have also been awesome to see. The one thing that didn't happen in the last project though is we, and this, you know, this isn't necessarily critique, but we pushed it forward. As a board, I came in, it was my first year here. I came in sort of in the middle of the planning. And I think the capital project vote was my first few months here, if I'm not mistaken. So this go-around, we really, in the midst of all the other stuff we were dealing with last year, we really wanted to try to bring folks together through these committees and also try to engage with people in other ways too. So I already feel with that, that is different. I feel with the new architect and a new architecture firm, one that has a lot of experience with a lot of districts. That being said, Bill has given us a ton of time and attention with this. I feel very confident about this one coming up as well. And in that, it will be an even stronger one. I think that might be it from Zoom.
Thank you.
And for you all?
I think that's it from us. Thank you very much. Thanks for.
That was fun. I got to read and. We haven't done that yet. That was new.
Yeah.
Bill, are you still there? You want to say goodbye?
I'll say goodbye. See you next year.
Just so you know, some of you haven't gotten to know Bill, but on the committees, his nickname was the Dream Maker. Right, Bill?
That's correct.
And I didn't know Bill super well when we started. Obviously, I've met with him a bunch of times, but we haven't, we hadn't spent the hours that we spent together when we started really rolling up our sleeves back in March on the project. And I hadn't fully seen the Dream Maker side of Bill. But I just want to, you know, talk about our architect for a second. So Bill, I'm going to say nice things, you know, deal with it. But Bill, you know, he really has a lot of experience. He's worked with a lot of districts. He's seen a lot of bumps and different things happen with projects. And so we really think, you know, both the firm that he works for and the experience Bill brings is going to, is really a huge value added to the project. And we're already seeing it just with helping us kind of put together a project that really impacts every single school in a positive, visible way and also deals with all the infrastructure that we need to address. That was what we came to build with, you know, back when we hired him, that that's what we wanted to do with this project. He's been focused on that ever since. And he's really embraced this committee process that we developed as well. So we're really excited to keep working with him too. I managed to keep my, my members of times I said excited down to baby ten tonight. And I tried to work at some other words, but we're very excited to move forward with this. And votes next Tuesday, six in the morning till nine at night. And then the board meets the next night to certify the vote and have a regular board meeting, right? And so we will do some reminders for the vote. And we know the, you know, local media's been covering it, but we'll do some robocalls and website stuff and social media as well. And again, we're hoping folks come out, vote, and then we'll deal with the next steps from the results of the vote.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you to the facilities committee for the work you've put in. I think it's been a really good process. I'm also really, for lack of a better word, excited about all of this. And I look forward to the updates and to see the progress as it happens. I also just want to say, I think it's been, the communication, I think, has been really good. It's been great to have these Zoom 10 halls. This is, you know, this is something that was born out of COVID, but I think it's a tool that the district is using really well. And then we have these talks recorded on YouTube, so if someone can't make it to it in person, they can always go back to it. And I think that's been really helpful. I don't know if you're checking to see how many times the time has been watched, but a couple of people have said that they, you know, they couldn't make it in real time, but they did go back to watch it and found it really helpful. So thanks again for that.
I love increasing my presence on YouTube.
Watch out. Great, okay. Well, is there any more questions? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Anthony, some move.
Second? For a second, favor, opposed, and in favor passes seven to zero. Thanks so much. See you next Wednesday.